I want to welcome everybody here tonight. If anybody has any electronic devices, could you please put them on vibrate? I want to welcome everybody here. We have a nice crowd here. It's nice to see people come out to our meetings. So, thank you for coming out. Before we start, okay, I want to make a special notice or should say presentation. I wanted to start off the meeting with a special announcement. And we do have a bylaw later in the agenda which will officially declare Chris Nepsi as our incoming CEO. Chris, on behalf of council, I'd like to congratulate you on your position. You worked together with us over the past term of council and we can see how well you led our infrastructure efforts and everything else thrown your way. You did a great job, Chris. You really have. You spearheaded projects which contributed to the growth of our town and ensured that our and maintained positive and constructive relationships with private business and developers, which is very important for our community. You've been a strong leader for the town and you have big shoes to fill because we got to say goodbye to Donna and she was a great CEO. So, I want to welcome and congratulate you. And if we can get... Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank council. A sincere thank you to council. I'm honored that for your support in my appointment and I'm excited to work with you and make your vision for future Essex a reality. We'll get there. So, to the residents and developers, my municipal peers, I look forward to continuing to work with you, build on our relationships, and continue to create new ones. Special thanks to Donna. I know she's not here. She's not feeling well right now. Her commitment and work ethic for the Town of Essex has really laid a solid foundation for me to continue on here with the town. Thanks to my fellow directors, staff, current and former. I'm excited to carry on our work and continue to achieve great things here in the Town of Essex. And a final thanks to my family for my strength, my focus, and my constant reality check. So, thank you very much.
And before we continue, I forgot we're going to bring regrets from our deputy mayor, Malash. He's off ill tonight and councillor Bjorkman's on vacation. So, the press can come up. Is there any conflict of interest here tonight amongst council? Seeing none? We're going to have a closed meeting report, but before that, I think councillor Verbeek wants to make a notice motion.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor. This is the adoption of published agenda?
Okay.
Okay.
She's making a notice motion. She'll actually present and make it on. It's just an addition to the published agenda. So, we still do our motion for published agenda, but we should do the closed meeting. Counselor, we're going to do the closed meeting report first.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this evening, council met in closed session pursuant to section 239, 2B, sorry, 2B and 2E of the municipal act. And at this meeting, council received an update on various property standard orders and their status that were issued against properties in the municipality over the last year. And that's the extent of my closed meeting report, Mr. Mayor. So, through you, Mr. Mayor. Adoption of published agenda. As you noted, councillor Verbeek has a notice of motion that she will present at the appropriate spot in the agenda.
So, we just need a motion. Just a motion to allow her to...
No. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just that the published agenda be adopted as presented or and amended with the notice of motion coming from councillor Verbeek.
Can I have a mover on that? Seconder, councillor Bondi. All in favor? Let's carry it.
5.1 on the agenda, that the minutes of the regular council meeting held February 4th, 2019 be adopted as circulated.
Have a mover. Councillor Bowman, seconder, councillor Vanadon. Any questions on it? All in favor? Let's carry it.
5.2, that the minutes of the special council meeting held February 4th, 2019 be adopted as circulated.
Mover. Councillor Garan, seconder, councillor Bondi. Any questions? All in favor? Let's carry it.
And 5.3, that the minutes of the special council meeting held December 17th, 2018 be adopted as circulated.
Mover. Councillor Bowman and councillor Vanadon. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Carry it.
Mr. Mayor, under presentations this evening and delegations this evening, our first presentation is of the Town of Essex Heritage Week awards. There's two sets of awards. The first being the Youth Community Heritage Preservation Award with presentations or awards being provided to Eric Wolgin, Josh Birch, and Brian Newfeld. And the second set of awards is the Community Heritage Preservation Award, and that's to two organizations. The first being Essex and Community Historical Research Society and the Harrow Early Immigrant Society. I believe you, Mr. Mayor, together with our planner Rita Jabor will be doing the honors.
Yep. Rita, if you can come forward and if Eric, Josh, and Brian, I guess, can come forward.
Hello? Hello? Test, test, test.
Through you, Mr. Chair. To everybody in attendance, happy Heritage Week. Heritage Week is an annual observance on all matters of heritage. It's a time that, you know, we can use to highlight our local history, which is very rich, extending from the shores of Lake Erie all the way up here to Essex Center. And it's also a time to highlight heritage matters in the Town of Essex. On behalf of the Essex Municipal Heritage Committee, I am very, very pleased to assist you in presenting the Youth Community Heritage Preservation Award and the Community Heritage Preservation Awards tonight. It's the second year that we've presented these awards. These annual awards raise awareness of the importance of heritage preservation to our social and economic development by recognizing individuals who exemplify good preservation practices and encourage others to do the same. As a part of an effort to engage youth in our community's heritage, we reached out to Essex Driscoll High School and we asked the students to submit creative works which reflect our history. A special thank you to Ms. Scherer's Grade 10 English class for all of the outstanding submissions. Again, we'd like to congratulate the three winners. Eric Wolgin for his work, "The Tomato Farmer's mural." Brian Newfeld for his piece, "The Wheel Stopped." And Josh Birch for his speech, "My Final Abnormal Checkup." All these pieces are available online on our webpage and as well as in your agenda. The students, they may or may not be in attendance. I don't believe they are. I got a couple of calls from them. Unfortunately, students have part-time jobs and they have math tests the next day. We will deliver the plaques to them eventually. However, I do see members of the Essex and Community Historical Research Society as well as the Harrow Early Immigrant Research Society. Tonight, we want to recognize both these societies for their outstanding contributions to the preservation and celebration of our local heritage. These dedicated volunteers contribute their time freely to assisting the general public and the committee with research, projects, and activities that support the preservation and promotion of our local history and our family history. So, without further ado, if we can call up members of ECHERS?
If you can come forward, please. We'd like to give you a plaque.
We also have some members of the Essex Municipal Heritage Committee in attendance, so if
I just want to say thank you to the members of past council, the present council today for the support. And Rita mentioned two years ago, the formation of the Heritage Committee. That's one of the best committees that the council has approved in the last two years. And all the research and preservation of it has just started. Right now, ECHERS is working on a project of the old county houses along County Road 50. We have over 50 houses that date anywhere back to 1807. Every house on the list so far is at least 140 years old. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Rita.
The second presentation this evening is Maria Chiapa from the University of Windsor. Ms. Chiapa is an associate professor in the Department of Earth and Environmental Sciences. And she presented before council last year in connection with a geophysics survey grant that she received in connection with cemetery research. And so, she proposed to conduct this cemetery research with the pursuant to the geophysics grant as it relates to some of the historical cemeteries in the Town of Essex. She's now before council this evening to provide council with an update on that research and on that survey.
Thank you, Rob. Maria, if you want, you can start anytime you're ready.
Thank you. I know once again.
If you can just press the button on your mic there.
Yeah, she's got it up there.
There you go. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hang on while I figure out how to get my... Okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, honorable councillors, thank you very much for listening to me and for providing me with the opportunity to talk to you about some of the research that I've done with students in the last year. We put forward a proposal to council to look at several of the cemeteries in this area as an offshoot of a project that was funded for Canada 152 years ago. And so, we are using some geophysical methods to look for unmarked graves in several cemeteries around Essex County. We had, I had two students, Alex De Silva and Ashlyn Groom, who did internships with me in the fall and looked at two cemeteries. For those of you who aren't familiar with ground penetrating radar, we're basically looking for objects underground. Ground penetrating radar is a superficial method. It doesn't penetrate, we don't dig, we just scan. And so, it makes it ideal for looking in cemeteries to try and figure out what's there. So, we looked at two cemeteries. Gilgal Cemetery on Walker Road between the 5th and the 6th concessions and the New Canaan Cemetery on County Road 12, which is also an African Methodist Episcopal cemetery as So, this is the Gilgal Cemetery. We looked at the northern half of it in between the red lines. We did a one-meter line spacing over about a 30 by 30-meter grid. And if you add that up in your head, it ends up being approximately two, just over two kilometers of lines that we walked in that 30 by 30-meter spacing. So, for those of you who are familiar with the Gilgal Cemetery, it's also known as the Taylor Cemetery, also known as the Pollard Cemetery. You know that there's one standout gray headstone in there, the Taylor Headstone. And what we were looking at, we were able to, or some of the anomalies that we found were focused around the Taylor Headstone. You can see on the top one, my arrow doesn't quite go all the way to that top red anomaly, but we were able to find an anomaly at approximately .7 meters depth there. And then, but we also found another anomaly just to the south of that, which was not marked. And this particular anomaly, when we start looking at it in more detail, actually appears to be two separate anomalies, possibly two burials or two buried, old buried headstones. We're not actually sure which without digging it up. There were also a number of other smaller anomalies that we don't know what they are. It's also, again, possible that they're burials, but without digging, we can't identify them. And we also did it, did not do it in a fine enough grid spacing to be able to conclusively identify what was going on. So, the second cemetery was the New Canaan Cemetery, just near Gesto. We ran it over the cleared area. For those of you who are familiar with it, it's at the end of a long road. We ran it again, the same spacing, 1.1 meter over a 34 by 14-meter grid. And so, what I'm showing you here is some of the anomalies that were on some of the lines. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with this type of work, and I should have mentioned it before, what we're looking at is basically a vertical profile. So, if you think about it, it's a scan, a vertical scan coming straight down. So, we run the ground penetrating radar in a line and we're scanning underneath it. So, anything right underneath the instrument is what we're going to be looking at. And we're looking for things that look like parabolas or uneven anomalies because that tells us that there's something there. It may tell us that there's an object. It may tell us that there's disturbed ground. And either of those is important because we're looking for either disturbed grounds or we're looking for buried headstones and caskets. So, these are things that we are trying to locate. So, these are two lines going north-south. And you can see very clearly that there's some anomalies in certain areas on these lines. And this proved very interesting to us because once we did the lines going north-south, we then did the same perpendicular lines to see if we could isolate the anomalies a little bit more. And you can see on the anomaly, or on the one that just popped up, you can see that very strong anomaly on the left-hand side of it, which is approximately about four meters long. And this is unusual because you don't usually see that type of large anomaly in, when, if you're looking for individual graves. So, we can see another one. And again, we have a couple of other anomalies pop up. And then, we have our maps. So, this is over the area. We can see, as we go down, .25 meters, .4, .8 meters. We can see in one area on the left-hand side, a fairly large, very strong anomaly. And that was some of the ones that I was showing on the previous one, which actually extends fairly deep. And it's interesting that, again, this is not visible on the surface. We don't know exactly what there is, but the size of it suggests we're dealing either with perhaps the remnants of an old building, an old church, or perhaps we're dealing with a larger burial area where you had multiple burials in the same pit, basically. It was suggested to me that we might be looking at something like the, an area that was used for multiple people who died at the same time, that they had just had one large area opened up and put in multiple caskets. And so, for those of you who are familiar with Google Maps, that's what this is from and the orientation. And you can see on here, let's see, I don't have it, that for those of you who are familiar with it, on the lower right-hand side, that's where the monument is. And I can overlay my results. So, you can actually see that it's, the anomaly is nowhere near the monument. It's actually on the northwestern side of the cemetery. And so, we're interested in exploring that a little bit more. And so, our future plans with this project is we would like to complete the Gilgal Cemetery Course Grid and then examine specific areas within Gilgal and the New Canaan Cemeteries at a much finer grid spacing to more conclusively identify what exactly we're dealing with. And eventually, possibly extend this to other cemeteries. So, again, I'd like to say thank you very much to everybody for allowing us to do this work, to Rita for getting this set up with and providing us with the information that we needed for it. And I hope this has proven informative. It's certainly been very useful and interesting to me because I like knowing what's going on and below the ground. I like scanning. We dig history. That's the name of our project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maria, for the presentation. Very interesting, very interesting. Any questions from council at all? I need a motion. Yeah, a motion, oh, councillor Vanadon.
Through the chair, how many more cemeteries are there to investigate?
My understanding is that there's 13 cemeteries in the area that we could investigate potentially.
Any other questions, council? Have a motion received, a presentation, councillor Bondi, seconder, councillor Garan. All in favor? Let's carry it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next presentation this evening under 6.3 of the agenda. We have here before us this evening Richard Wymer, Secretary Treasurer and Executive Director of the Essex Region Conservation Authority. And Mr. Wymer is here tonight to present ERCA's 2018 Annual Report and objectives for 2019 based on its Sustainability Plan 2016 to 2025.
Thank you. Welcome, Richard. Anytime you're ready, you can start, Richard. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and good evening. And what I'll do as I usually do, I'll say a couple of words first. We'll show our annual video if we could, and then I'll come back and talk about some of our actions for 2019. I'm going to begin by noting that the Institute for Sustainable Communities recognizes that throughout the world, people want the same things: access to clean air and water, economic opportunities, a safe and healthy place to raise their kids, shelter, lifelong learning, a sense of community, and the ability to have a say in the decisions that affect their lives. And we recognize that those are essential to create and sustain Essex region as the place for life. And we are working with municipalities, foundations, landowners, agencies, stakeholders, and partners to work to realize and achieve those goals in our region. Our programs continue to demonstrate an ongoing and consistent response to very real and very serious problems and challenges that we have in our region, from land degradation, low natural recovery, flooding, and erosion. These were some of the same problems and challenges we faced when we were established in 1973. Today, we have new issues. Water quality issues are changing. The Great Lakes are becoming impacted. Climate adaptation, sustainable growth and development. We must consider all of these things when we're working to meet the needs of municipalities. So, each year, we continue to develop and deliver programs and projects that address those challenges. 2018 was no different, as you'll see in our annual report, video and annual report. And I wasn't told that I had to do the work tonight, so I apologize if it doesn't come Well, we'll just close this one down and I'll begin the rest of the presentation. That video is accessible on our website and YouTube as well, if you want to take a look at it. The work that we do relies very much on a strong board, and I'd certainly like to welcome councillor Vanadon into our board and welcome councillor Bowman back to our board. We look forward to working both, with both of you in implementing our ambitious agenda for 2019. I'd also like to recognize Mayor Snively and councillor Bjorkman for your support with us over the last four years, certainly for councillor Vanadon and Bowman, some big shoes to fill. And while I'm congratulating and thanking people, I'd certainly like to congratulate Chris Nepsi as well on your new role. We've worked very well with you over the past number of years and certainly look forward to working with you in your new capacity with one caveat, unlike your predecessor, please don't take any of our staff. We enjoy the staff that we do have, so... And then, you know, if that happens, we'll come back and have another discussion. But we certainly, Essex continues to be very well served by strong involvement, both on our board of directors as well as a strong support and challenging support from administration in a good way. In 2016, we launched our 10-year strategic plan. That guides all of our actions. That plan was based on five key things that we heard from people that were... we heard from people that were concerned in our community. And I'd like to highlight some of the actions we'll be taking on this year in each of those key areas. The first thing we heard was that the climate will continue to change, and we must prepare to adapt to its impacts. And certainly, you saw some of that in the video in front of you. In 2019, we're actually, through our new climate change specialist, will be researching regional vulnerabilities, impacts, and best practices, and lead the development of a regional climate change plan to identify priorities and potential funding supports. And I know some of your administration were able to attend our workshop in December, and we're going to continue the great work that was presented and discussed at that workshop. With anticipated record-high levels on Lake Erie, we'll also be updating regional flood contingency plans and working with municipalities on flood response. We're also providing technical support to all municipalities on flood control and flood infrastructure, master drainage, stormwater, and hazard mapping studies. We have new regulations in engineering capacity that we added in 2018, and that'll help us provide added support for our stormwater reviews, drainage reviews, and related engineering and infrastructure reviews, to ensure that we can continue to respond in a timely manner that reflects ministry guidelines. We'll also be working with municipalities to develop a shared climate station network, to assist in providing more timely advance warnings, response, and importantly, reporting on storm events that took place. And finally, with our new website that we launched last year, we've actually initiated web-based permit application processes as well, and that'll help, again, facilitate development review. Secondly, we heard that the Great Lakes are our most significant natural resource, and more must be done to improve water quality. You saw, again, in the video, information from our watershed report card that noted we've got a lot of work to do. Our 2019 budget includes support for research, monitoring, and partnerships, and managing and maintaining data information systems, which is critical for evidence-based decision-making. We also know about the release of the provincial and federal Lake Erie Action Plan with respect to phosphorus, and IRCA is and other CA's are effective delivery agents in the action plan for reducing phosphorus. Our 2019 budget includes federal funding to support agricultural best management practices and associated monitoring and science, so we can continue to understand the impacts of phosphorus in our Great Lakes. We'll also continue to restore more than 60 acres of forest and prairie habitat to improve connections, build ecosystem resilience, and benefit water quality, climate change, and ultimately, our quality of life. We're going to continue monitoring phosphorus levels getting into Lake Erie. We introduced last year an innovative 10-acre University of Windsor Alumni Association wetland at Hillman Marsh Conservation Area, and with the University of Windsor, we'll be undertaking monitoring to see how successful different materials are at extracting phosphorus before it gets into the lake, that we can then collect or harvest and then potentially reuse on our fields. And finally, with the Detroit River Canadian Cleanup, we're going to build on our efforts to delist the Detroit River as a designated environmental area of concern, or AOC, under the Great Lakes Water Quality Agreement. In 2019, we're going to be continuing to rehabilitate a 70-acre wetland on the Kanard River and creating new fish habitat at the city of Windsor's Pesh Island. Thirdly, people told us our landscapes and habitats are among the most significant in Canada, and more action is needed to protect them. So in 2019, we're going to complete management planning processes for Cedar Creek, here in the town of Essex, and we'll be doing that with our new Conservation Services Advisory Board. We'll be undertaking some business planning for the Homestead and John Arden Holiday Beach Conservation Area, to identify and confirm infrastructure needs and investments in visitor services, where there is a business case to support that investment. We know our facilities were built many, many years ago in response to visitor needs back then. Visitor needs have changed, and we need to make sure that our facilities address those changes in, in expectations. And finally, in 2019, we're going to be restoring more of our Clean Water Green Spaces acquisition funding to support securment of key lands in partnership with federal and provincial governments, in, in keeping with our land securment strategy. Part of the work we do, of course, is continuing to manage over 19 conservation areas and over 80 kilometers of greenways, including grading, hazard tree removal, site maintenance, and enforcement to support visitor use. And we'll also be providing outdoor education for more than 10,000 elementary and secondary, secondary school students, including delivery of our Environmental Special High Skills major certification. And here at the Homestead, I think all of our programs for March are already spoken for, but you may, there may still be some opportunities. Fourthly, we need to ensure our communities grow and expand sustainably. Part of that effort will be continuing and hopefully completing consultation and finalizing development of what we call our Place for Life policies. These are the policies that we use that guide our planning and our development processes, and our board approved direction around some of our program policies and directions. And we want to integrate all of those together, so we can provide comprehensive review of applications and programs, depending on the interest. We'll be working with Lake Shore and Tecumseh to undertake a Lake St. Clair shoreline management plan, and with the town of Kingsville to finalize a natural heritage background study, all of, as part of town official plan updates, and continuing to provide advice and direction to all member municipalities. In 2019, we anticipate over 800 Planning Act applications that we'll be reviewing. We're also completing and reviewing over 1,000, and that number's probably more likely around 1,200, Section 28 permit applications, and that's everything related from stormwater, commercial, industrial, and residential development, and large-scale greenhouse developments, municipal drainage act reviews, and general water resource management-related requests. And that number has grown dramatically over the years. We've added capacity to try to reflect that increase in number. It shows that this region is continuing to grow, which is a positive thing. We'll also be working with municipalities to finalize a municipal agreement acknowledging our role in reintegrated watershed planning, protecting and managing natural hazards, natural heritage, and water resources, and again, providing advice and direction on Planning Act applications. Finally, the fifth thing we heard, that IRCA is a sustainable, resilient, and valued agency. And part of what we're proposing to do in 2019 is updating our capital plan and capital asset inventory. This was a project we initiated under our last Sustainability Plan that resulted in millions of dollars of investment in our conservation areas. We need to make sure that we can continue that reasonable and responsible investment. In 2019, we'll be doing some upgrades at Holiday Beach Conservation Area, including construction of a new workshop, and we're going to be beginning to replace the, the old beat-up roads out there with some new tar and chip over the next couple of years, beginning in 2019. We'll also be installing a new natural playground and a new outdoor classroom with support from Enbridge and the University of Windsor Alumni Association. And those are projects that we've gotten through the work of the Essex Region Conservation Foundation's Place for Life campaign, which shows the work of the foundation feeding back into the work of the authority to create good projects out in the field. And in Essex here, we're going to be hopefully constructing that pedestrian bridge over the drain at the entrance to the Cypher Systems Group Greenway at Highway 3, and undertaking an engineering study to assess the shoreline at John Arden Park Homestead Conservation Area, which we know has and will continue to be impacted by high water levels. We'll continue to use our new website as a platform to improve customer service usability. We're adding new capacity relating to applicant and customer service, front desk reception and related internal support functions, again, so we can continue to operate efficiently and effectively. We'll be developing a new five-year sustainability plan to support initiatives identified in the strategic plan, and to ensure that we have the resources and that we're managed in the most effective and efficient way to support those shared watershed outcomes. And finally, we're reviewing and updating all of our operational administrative policies to ensure consistency with changes in legislation, public sector best practice, as well as authority practice. And we'll be developing an employee handbook to summarize some of our HR-related policies, our operational policies, and to improve our experience with new staff, and respond to some of the issues that were identified in our 2018 employee survey around communications. So how are we going to fund all of this? Our budget for 2019 is proposed to be at about 7.7 million, and that includes a total levy contribution of around 3.2 million. This is an increase of 89,000 across the board. It works out to 32 cents per person, which brings it to a total of $10 per person in 2019. That includes almost 2.3 million in leveraged funding, and when combined with fee-for-service revenues, more than 60% of our budget is funded through non-levy sources of funding, which again, places IRCA in the top 10 of all 36 conservation authorities in terms of programs and revenues that we bring in. But at the same time, we continue to be in the bottom five of all conservation authorities in terms of levy supporting the operations that we do. Provincial average is around 52%. While the CA average, sorry, while the average CA levy supporting operations in 2017 was $16.42 per capita, IRCA's levy supporting operations in 2018 was only $9.68 per capita. And again, that's proposed to go up to $10 per person in 2019. And that includes funds set aside for land acquisition and capital and operational reserves that are not available from an operational perspective. And while this builds a strong case for support, it's only enough to continue to maintain the status quo. It's not enough to improve or dramatically improve the health of our watersheds, to keep our beaches open more, reduce phosphorus and blue-green algae in our lakes, provide open spaces and trails. These are essential for sustainable communities, as I mentioned off the top. They help build resilience to climate change, and importantly, attract and retain the talent that this region desires. Further, as funding programs change and evolve with changes in government priorities or are reduced or eliminated, and as new interests seek, seek funding, it's harder to continue to support key programs with external support, programs that are funded by levy and other conservation authorities. Sustaining the place for life is not our work alone. It's what we do together with our municipalities, our neighbors, our universities and colleges, our donors, our local and regional agencies, and the many other private partners that we work with. We need to continue to celebrate our successes, but we also need to increase the scope, scale, and intensity of our joint efforts to create a place we can all be proud of and celebrate, one that we can call home for life. So thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this evening. I'm certainly happy to respond to any questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Richard. Any questions from council? Councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great job, Mr. Wymer, as always. I enjoyed my time on the IRCA board a couple of terms ago now, I guess I can say. With all of the talk going around with Tecumseh and LaSalle possibly voting to add fluoride to their water to join Windsor, does IRCA have an opinion on that in terms of how it affects our, our Great Lakes, our waters, the health of our ecosystems?
Our water quality programs don't actually monitor for things like that. That's the work of the Health Unit, and we would look to the Health Unit to provide the, the information and knowledge as, as it relates to fluoride. Fluoride is naturally occurring in the region, and in terms of the extent that, that would be consideration or concern, I would again leave that to the Health Unit, who have the statistics and the information available to make those decisions and determinations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question, Richard, about shoreline protection. We know, and I brought that up different times. Do you think there's going to be more funding come down from senior levels on shoreline protection?
That's a great question. You know, we've looked in the past to our Water and Erosion Control Infrastructure Program as an example, where we've been able to match funding with municipalities to integrate or incorporate floodproofing and floodworks on, on those WECI programs. We've done some work in Essex over the years with that. The John Arden Park Homestead work, as an example, is proposed under the WECI program. We know currently, provincially, that program is under review. We know in the past that we've advocated and talked about the return of the Shoreline Property Owners Assistance Act as another example, in some areas where that might be effective at providing some long-term support, or some support to landowners who need to undertake works. In some areas, that may not be the best tool, because of the impacts that we are seeing with respect to high water levels and lake levels. In fact, the, the changes and the damages that we're seeing may not actually last the 10 years, in terms of some of the improvements that, that may need to be funded through some of the programs like that. So we've certainly taken a look at where are the best cases, where is the most need for some of these programs to be, and we've certainly advocated to senior levels of government to provide that support. There's programs that the Federation of Canadian Municipalities are offering, and may offer as it relates to impacts from climate change, and municipal infrastructure opportunities to take advantage of some of that funding. We'd certainly be happy to explore that in the context of our climate change work, and explore that with municipalities around what are some of the potential opportunities to, to benefit from some of those programs, if there is a benefit to us.
It is, thanks. It is a very serious problem. I, I mean, anybody that's in a boat that goes out from Colchester, for example, to Kingsville, you look alone, shoreline there, Cabota Park in it, they've lost many, many yards of frontage there, and with no protection whatsoever there. So that's something I, I think, like I say, I pushed before on IRCA. I hope that continues, that we push and push and push for shoreline protection. So, thank you, Richard.
Certainly is. And I think there's also, if I may, Mr. Mayor, there's a connection there with planning efforts around ensuring that planning respects the, the opportunities or the, the areas where development should be permitted, where it may not be, where it may be more challenging. There's certainly opportunities to work with engineering in all the municipalities. I would note, we have a report going to actually to our board on Thursday that repeats some of what we may have heard in the media around U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, that have identified that it is likely that 2019 will see record-high levels on Lake Erie. We know a couple of years ago, there were record-high levels on, on Lake Ontario, which caused some significant problems for the Toronto Island. And even if you look back to last year, the water levels did cause some problems, especially in southeast Leamington and, and the areas that are very, very prone to flooding. So we're certainly anticipating that we will see more, more concern in 2019 as a result of those high waters. And we certainly, again, will be working with municipalities to ensure that our, all of our response systems are in place and operating effectively, should that situation arise.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Thank you very much, Richard, for the presentation. Could I have a motion to receive a presentation? Councillor Bowman and councillor Vanadold, all in favor? Thank you, Richard. Thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Our last delegation this evening is Murray Van Wiregen and Terry Jones. They're here on behalf of Weston Apartments, and they're requesting council to consider eliminating development fees in Ward 1 for the proposed build of a multiple dwelling at 22 Victor Street in Essex Centre.
Thank you, Rob. Gentlemen, anytime you're ready, you can start with your presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Congratulations, Chris, on your position.
Okay. I did bring 12 copies. I'm kind of green at this, so you'll have to bear with me. I'm not sure where to hand them out, or copies of the proposed apartment. Okay. The reason we request a little bit of compensation for the development fees is the costing of developing an apartment or complex like this, after we run through the math of it, at the end of the day, it's all about the money. And it's, it's pretty tight. The, the rental costs or rental prices have, closer? Absolutely. The cost of the, or the cost, but the, the rates that you can charge for rental properties are, are regulated, and they're pretty tight right now. They haven't really followed the cost of development. So we're basically competing with existing buildings that have been built many years ago. The costs of, of building these apartment complexes has gone up, and they, they go up every year. So our current budget is about 13 to 14 million for, for this particular building. We have three sites that we can build on. One is in Amisburg, another one is in Kingsville, and one here. And we've chosen to come here, because I think the vacancy rate here, and just the demographics, and all the things that Essex has to offer, appeal to us. And that, that's really the, the long and short of it. Again, I don't have a presentation for you. I would have put something a little bit, a little bit more formal together for you. Like I said, I'm the first time doing this. So yeah, the, it's really to try and compensate for, it's a competitive business. To build a property is a lot of money upfront, and we're trying to divert some of the costs, not divert it. The tax revenue will come after the billings are up, but for us to, any, any type of help we can get in the development of the complexes, it would be greatly appreciated. And that's really the request of it. And I, we can go through numbers, and I can show you spreadsheets, but I didn't really think, I didn't know if I wanted to bore you to death with that either. So that's really the, the long and the short of it.
Thank you, Mary. Terry, did you have a, did you want to add anything?
Oh, I have to follow the others.
Okay. All right, thanks. Questions from councillor Vanadold?
First of all, I'd like to say how delighted I am that you're going to build this. It's a desperate need. Everybody knows how tight housing is, and, and there's people just screaming for rental stuff. So this is great. But why only six stories? Couldn't you make it a little taller?
Trust me, I would make it taller. The math works out better. The taller we go, the better the math works. So if you want 12, we'll do it.
Would the soil conditions support it?
I don't think so. I don't know. It will? Really? Okay, I'm not that guy. I just...
So what is it exactly you're asking us for?
We'd like to get relief on all the development fees for building the property. There is some, there is quite a substantial cost to that. And that would be, we're looking for a concession, basically, be straight up. It's trying to get, we are going to invest 12, 13 million, or actually, 13, 14 million, depends on, and we don't, we have to move pretty quick, because those costs keep escalating. And so that's what we're looking for, to try and mitigate. those costs keep escalating. And so, that's what we're looking for, to try and mitigate some of the costs that we have in building it. And again, that's what we're looking for, to be honest with you.
Through the chair, could I ask, could you be specific about which costs and how much?
You know, I really, I think it's the, as far as I understand it, there's a charge of per unit when you go to build. A two-bedroom is $6,180. A one-bedroom is $4160. Those are the costs I know about. But these are all going to be two-bedroom apartments. There's 57 of them. So, that works out to about, you know, 350,000, give or take a little bit. But I don't know if there's other charges either. So, again, understanding to develop the, any additional charges that would be levied by the town is what we're looking for.
Anybody else? Any other counselor got some questions? Counselor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, perhaps Jeffrey Morrison, our Director of Finance and Corporate Services, can explain to council what the costs are, what the bottom line is. Because to me, you look like my knight's on shining armor, you know, riding in here on the white horse, you know. This is what we want, right? My question to you is, do this, and then come to Harrow and do another one, please. Because I have a small rental property myself, and when I post it, when it's vacant on Facebook, within 20 minutes, I have like 15 people lined up. So, there is definitely need in all of our municipality, I would think. So, this is fantastic. Yes, seriously, look and see if you can go higher if council supports this. I understand it's all about the bottom dollar, right? I understand. And I do think this council is a development-friendly council, because we do see that we need housing. All of us hear that cry for housing all the time. We haven't had any new renting, rental stock in a while. What we do have is dated and old. So, you know, I think, once this hits the media, you're going to have a wait list, right? I think we need to publish your phone numbers so people can call you and not me. I'm already getting it, right? I'm already getting people calling me. So, perhaps, Mr. Morrison, if you can provide, what tools or what mechanism does council have to meet the developers? You know, we have the development charges, but what else is coming, so that we all know what the cost is to our taxpayers? And if, you know, the multi-residential developments we pay for, how many years does that look like we'll be breakeven?
Yeah. If, allow our deputy CEO to speak first.
Through your worship, I'd just maybe help out, organize where we're going here. So, the developers here in, you know, requesting the waiving of the development charges for that site. The next two reports are speaking to different aspects of that project. The following report from planning is the Site Plan Control Approval. So, it's asking council that the report be received, and then they execute that site plan. So, you have to get to that step first. And then the report after that is a report from Jeff Morrison, and deals with a mechanism around multi-residential development charges and strategies around that, and is looking for direction on council, on which way they want to proceed with those. So, maybe we get through the Site Plan Control Report first, deal with that, then deal with the following report. And I think that's where Jeff Morrison will be getting into the finances.
Good. Any other questions from council? I think this is great, guys. You're 10 minutes from Windsor, which is a bonus for you. Okay? It's a great place to build. And like I say, the location in our county is perfect for you, right there. So...
Absolutely. Thank you.
Should anybody else speak on this, do you think? Okay. Any other questions? No questions? So, I guess we'll receive the presentation. So moved by Counselor Bowman and Counselor Vanondell. All in favor? Carrie. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council.
Any questions at all? No. Thank you very much.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor. 8.1, then, is Planning Report 2019-06, and this is with respect to the Site Plan Control Approval for 22 Victor Street. This is also in accordance with Bylaw 1787 being the authorizing bylaw for that Site Plan Control Agreement for receipt, and that Bylaw 1787 received three readings this evening.
Counselor Vanondell and Counselor Bowman. All in favor? Carrie.
And through you, Mr. Chair. Accordingly, the next report, Corporate Services 2019-02, re-waving multi-residential development charges for receipt. And the report's also asking that council provide direction on whether it's desired to provide a waiver of the municipal-wide services portion of development charges through a rebate that would be paid back through the incremental tax increase for each development. And we have Jeff Morrison, our Director of Corporate Services.
Jeff?
Through the chair. So, I'll give you a little background on kind of the model that's built within this document or this report. So, we have the commercial development charges that came in 2018. It was a combined report with economic development, where the development charges were waived. It was a model that was created to fund those development charges back into the reserve. Because if you waive those development charges through an amendment to the bylaw or through some other tool, whether it's a grant or a rebate program, you have to fund it back into the development charges. So, you have to pay it back. Just because you waive it doesn't mean that it's gone. You have to pay it back. So, we're funding it through the incremental tax increase associated with the properties. So, on a commercial development that was proposed earlier, or at a prior meeting, it would be, say you paid $1,000 in taxes prior to development, then you paid $100,000 in taxes after development. So, that $99,000 in additional tax revenue that the town gets every year would go to pay off that development charge. So, that way, we make ourselves whole. So, that tool was then applied to affordable housing. So, we changed it up a little bit with that one, where rather than going through the actual amendment to the bylaw, we created a tool where it would act as a rebate to fund those development charges. Because you have two options here. You can do an amendment to the bylaw, which has a 60-day period, and then a public consultation to amend it, or you can create a grant or a pool or a rebate, where you can fund those development charges through other funds within the municipality. So, that's what we did in those situations. So, for this report, the waiving of multi-residential development charges, the tool is the same. It's the incremental tax increase. So, the taxes that we receive after the development would go to pay back those development charges that were waived. So, based on the analysis that I created within the document, I scaled it based on a 25-unit development, split one unit, split two unit, 50, and a 75. The payback period is 1.8 years to 3.24 years. But note that this is for the municipal-wide services. So, municipal-wide services make up 66.666% of the development charges that we collect. The wastewater portion is 33.3333% of those development charges that we collect. So, it's not recommended that the development charges for the wastewater portion be waived because the expansion to the wastewater plant in Essex was done in 2006, 2017, or sorry, 2006, 2007, to the sum of $14.3 million, with 47% going to new development. So, we upfronted that. And now, we have a debenture that gets paid back year after year through collection of those wastewater development charges. So, the balance on that is approximately $2.6 million that we still have to pay back until 2025. So, those development charges that we collect on any development within the town goes towards paying that debt for that. We have a similar situation in Ward 4. So, just to give you some background as to why this section in the report that says existing wastewater development charges are in place to finance existing debt associated with the upgrades at the Harrow and Essex Wastewater Treatment Plants, that's why. And that's why we wouldn't recommend waiving that wastewater portion, which is 33% of total development charges. But we do provide a tool for council's consideration that provides funding to waive the municipal-wide services. So, the tool is available, and it's council's decision. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? Counselor Vanondell?
Through the chair. So, it would, if this was built, then we wouldn't see any tax advantage to the town for up to three and a half years, because the taxes being paid would be paying off the development charges, correct?
Correct.
And what would the timeline of the project be? Like, when would it start? When would the first taxation year be? So, when would we have to pay it back?
Upon occupancy, MPAC would then go back and assess. The, it's difficult, those are estimates, 1.8 to 3.24 years. I used an estimated value based on kind of historical numbers or things that I've seen. MPAC uses a, I think it's a revenue model for it. So, they take revenue, take away occupancy, or calculate occupancy, vacancy. So, their model's a little bit different. So, to mimic that model would have been difficult without actually knowing what's there. But based on the estimates, yes, it'd be 1.8 to 3.24 years, and we wouldn't identify any of that taxation until year 3.25, potentially, or 1.81.
And presumably, construction wouldn't start till next year. Or they've got three years to build?
Through the chair.
I think it said that in your report, that if we approve this, they have a three-year window to build.
I think that would be Jeff Watson's report.
All right. Any other questions? I, to you, Jeff, so you recommend we do not waive the wastewater portion of it. And council's clear on that, ain't it?
Correct.
Okay. No other questions? Counselor Bowman?
I just think that's a good option. It's easy to lay it out. It gives the proponents a break in getting where they want to get to, and it protects the municipality at the same time. So, I think it's a good option. Probably not perfect for them, but it's still a good option. So, when the time comes, I'd make that motion.
I guess you can make it, counselor. There was no other questions. If you make your motion.
I would make that motion, and I'll let Mr. Morrison put the wording forward, so it complies with our policies.
Yes. Yeah. We'll have the CEO. Deputy CEO.
Through your chair. I think, as noted before, the report was looking for direction from council, right? There was no recommendation coming out of the Finance Department. They were providing you a strategy for you to consider, if that's something you wanted to, and then options around that strategy, or I guess considerations in that strategy, right? The sewage portion, the municipal-wide portion. So, what I'm hearing from you, Counselor Bowman, is that you would like to recommend, that you want to provide a waiver of those municipal-wide services portion of the development charges through a rebate for multi-residential developments that would be paid back through the incremental tax increase of each development. So, you're looking to make that recommendation, then?
I have a second, or that, Counselor Verbeek. Any questions on that? Counselor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have your phone number, so I can't call you. But I, now we have a motion on the table, so I don't believe we can even talk to you. But is this something that was satisfactory for you going forward in able to get the shovel in the ground? Okay. So, I just, we had to ask them, right? We're going to find out sooner rather than later. So, they're shaking their heads no. So, it's either we're back to the drawing board, or we risk losing it, or it's an all or nothing, or we send the proponents with our CEO and our mayor to the boardroom one day, and they come up with some brainstorming ideas. I don't want to lose this.
How am I going to go about this? Do you want to withdraw your motion, Counselor Bowman, until we go back to the drawing board with these developers?
I would think it's a no-go position, and we should negotiate some more. So, I would withdraw it.
Is that okay with council? Is that okay with the support? Can I have this support? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Through your worship, although we're dealing with, I know we have a proponent here that's speaking to the topic, this report is for multi-residential development charges in general as a strategy. So, although this development falls into that, you know, I just want you to consider that, is this a strategy that you want to apply moving forward or not? Whether or not the proponent is agreeable to this strategy or not is a separate issue from whether council wants to move forward with this as a strategy for all multi-residential developments. I just think you need to consider that.
Counselor Vanondell?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps staff can give us a report on how we stack up against competition, which is Amherstburg, Kingsville, et cetera. Look, we don't want to be giving away the story here. I don't want to have to charge our taxpayers to put in sewers for developers, if that's their job to pay for that. And if they're paying for it everywhere else, why would we pay for it here? But we have to, we have to be realistic about competing with other towns. So, I'd like to know where they stand, and do we need to do this? I'm not as convinced as the proponents as to the risk of this project. I mean, the demand for housing is crazy. I mean, it's going to be filled very quickly. Interest rates are at the lowest in 50 years. I mean, it's, these are ideal conditions. So, I'm not so sure that all deals will be off the table if we don't agree to this. But I'd like to see how you stock up to other towns.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question through you, Mr. Chair, to Jeffrey Morrison. When we waive the development fees in Harrow, do we waive that wastewater component too? And I'm not saying, just for clarification with council, I'm not saying we waive that wastewater. I'm just trying to get information.
Through the chair. It's my understanding that they're 100% waived.
Okay. All right. That's good information collecting. I think, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, they may, this is why I was trying to, they may want to talk to us, and maybe you don't want to acknowledge it, but they were giving a nod that they would like to talk to us again. I don't want to send them away thinking our council isn't supportive, because I know that most of us are, all of us are trying to figure out how to do it. So, they wanted to speak to us again. Do you still want to?
Okay. Counselor Bondi, if you want to come back up again and speak on it?
Mr. Mayor and honorable counsel, I understand the reasoning for the wastewater. I do understand it. But this particular property already exists within and has all the infrastructure already built into it from its previous life. If we were on a greenfield, I could understand that. But we already have the existing infrastructure that's there, and that's really, I don't think you're comparing apples to apples. If we, like in business, if I invest, I can't, I have to invest money to get money back. I can't, and in this case, this apartment complex, I'm not going to, we are not going to see money for that for, the building is 14 months. So, you know the timing. The minute the ground thaws, there'll be shovels in there digging a hole and getting it put up. And we're looking at 14 months. So, basically, June of next year, we'll be leasing units. So, that's the target. And the vendor that we're using is very good, very reputable, and I think we can make that timeline. So, the income for the taxes would start, like June is the target for next year. And again, I do understand, and I appreciate the cost of building the infrastructure to expand. But the existing facility already used those infrastructures to be able to function. So, I don't, I can't go apples for apples. I'm not a civil engineer. But if it was greenfield, I would agree with the comments. So, hopefully that helps.
Our deputy CEO would like to make a comment.
Through your worship. I know what you're saying in terms of sewage transmission. The sewage pipes are there. The sewage pipes around the site, it was the old bakery site. The mains are there. That's not what the sewage development charges are paying for. When we built the sewage plant years ago, it was built to accommodate more capacity than we needed at the time. If we only built it for the people we had, we could never grow, you know. So, you have to build the plant bigger in anticipation of what's coming.
So, you have to build the plant bigger in anticipation of what's coming. So, that's what those charges are for. It's for the capacity at the plant. So, you're taking what was at Weston Bakery, I don't know, I was never in the site, but probably one or two bathrooms, and you're adding 57 bathrooms. So, that capacity is being utilized, and that, what that means ultimately is, in the future, when that plant comes to capacity, it's going to come earlier than anticipated. So, those costs are to pay for that expansion in the plant that already took place. So, by waiving those costs, as, as Mr. Morrison noted in his report, you're, you're, in essence, putting the cost of that future expansion, that growth component, on your existing water sewage rate users. That's, just to clarify what those costs are for.
I, I don't really have much else to say, other than, I mean, I've run the numbers, and, and we need, we need the help, and it's, it's, it's that simple. We'll just, we will go somewhere else if we have to, and I'm not, it's not a threat, it's just, it's business. And if, you know, I guess, you, you folks have to be comfortable, council has to be comfortable, Mr. Mayor, you have to be comfortable with it. We want to invest here, but at the end of the day, we have to make money doing it as well. And it's, it's, I know the vacancy rates are low and all of that, but it's, it's not quite as easy as it looks. Anybody that's, is interested, I'll give you my business card, and you can go through my spreadsheets, and it's, it's, the payback on a building like that is in the future, just like the sewer, sewer plants and all the infrastructure. The payback for us is 10, 15 years from now, not, not the day it opens, we aren't, you know, making money. It's, it doesn't work like that, unless you've paid for it, obviously, but that's not the case here either. I mean, we'll be financing some of it and whatnot, but that's, that's the reality of it, so we're, I, like I said, that's, I've run the numbers, and we need, we do need the help. It's, it's tight. It's tight, and it doesn't sound tight because of the vacancy rate, but the rates are not high enough to reflect the cost of buildings here. To build that building for $14 million, there's nothing in this town that even comes close to $14 million for, for an apartment complex, not even close. And if, you know, it might be easier for me to, or for us to go buy one, and we could go buy one, but, you know, they're inflated as well. So, the, the market isn't in a, is in real turmoil. It's not just real estate, it's, it's, it's commercial, commercial as well. I mean, we're seeing it in Windsor. Properties are selling for more than what, you know, five years ago. I've been here a long time, and, and I've never seen anything like it, like it has been in the last two or three years, so. I'll, I won't waste your time. I just, I think, I think it's a win-win for, for both of us, for, for Terry and, and the investment, and I'd like to see us come together on, on making it happen.
Thanks, Mayor. I think, I think at this point, to council, I think that this is, we're at a, we're at a point now, I think we got to table this and go back to the drawing board. So, if somebody would like to make a motion to table this, and, pardon me? Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Would you foresee the rental on these units being in June 2020 if it's up? Okay. I've run numbers anywhere from $1,250 to $1,600, $1,700, but I, that's so hard to predict because they're all over the map. If you go into Windsor, properties for $1,000, I wouldn't even live, I wouldn't expect my kids to live in them. They're, they're pretty bad for that price, in that price range, so, but there's places that are, you know, in that, in that range. I would say realistically, we should be able to get, I'd say $1,500, $1,600 a unit, is what we're looking at. And just further, are these all, is there any geared to income? Pardon? Any geared to income units?
What's geared to income?
Uh, no.
Could we do something with the, the sewage rates as we did with the, the other tax? Put it on the tax? Or is that possible?
Through the Chair, good question. Sewage rates are calculated based on a model that was created five years, just under five years ago now, which takes in a large number of considerations that I wouldn't even attempt to get into in touch. So, I really can't give you an answer to that right now. Sorry.
But for, for this type of project, it would probably be a pretty uniform rate across a, a, a complex of this size. They're talking 57 units, so you'd probably come up with a pretty good average on that.
Through the Chair. We could calculate something. You're correct, if there's 57 units, you can probably identify flows and the revenue that would be associated with that. But each one of those dollars that goes towards paying for the water wastewater side of things goes towards the life cycle of those assets that it flows through. So, it contributes to the overall system and the life cycling of that system. So, it's not as, it's a little more complicated than the incremental increase on the taxation side, so.
So, if a Counselor would like to make a motion, we, we got to table this. I think we got to go back. Counselor Van Nold.
I'd move that we table this until we have a report from, from administration on where we stand vis-à-vis the other towns in, in the region, so that we're not being whipsawed and forced to negotiate in public like this. I mean, we have to know where we stand. We don't want to send people away, and yet, we don't want to, we sell on the farm here, but we got to know where we stand. So, if we could wait for a report and table it now.
You're going to make a motion to table it?
Yes.
Can we have a secondor on that motion? Table it? Secondor by Counselor Bowman? All in favor of tabling it? Yeah. We don't want to lose the development either, gentlemen. I tell you that right now. So, let us go back to the drawing board and see what we can work out for you. We don't want to lose the development either. I don't, I don't think any of the Councilors sitting here want to, want to lose your development. We don't want to lose any development in this municipality.
Point of order, did my motion ask for the report from, from administration on this?
Did it? Yes. Yeah. Okay. Can I see a show on the vote? Yeah. Can I, all in favor again? We got to have a show. Everybody. Okay. Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
We will, we'll, we'll go back to the drawing board.
Okay. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, 8.3 on the agenda is a verbal report by the Director of Corporate Services, updating council on the launch of Virtual City Hall.
It's Virtual City Hall is finally here. We've been working on it over the number of years. Finance and Business Services has worked diligently in the past six months to get it up and running with IT and the software provider. So, Virtual City Hall is a tool that you can log on through our website. You can view your property tax information in real time. So, this resulted as a need that was identified through comments that we would receive during tax time, is that miscellaneous charges may be added to tax. People didn't know what the balances were throughout the year. So, if there was a drain work that was being done, for example, and it was added to tax, and then your tax bill was printed just prior to that, you wouldn't know what that extra amount was. So, now you can log on, and you can see how much you owe at any point in time, and you can make payments online via credit card. So, it integrates directly with our system. It's user-friendly, you can use it on your cellphone, and it just gives that opportunity, a customer service to our residents, that they can hop on and pay their taxes from the comfort of their couch. Just to go back a little bit also, is that we came back last year with a credit card transaction report, which identified that the town was absorbing approximately $60,000 in credit card fees associated with individuals paying by their credit card. A $1,000 cap was put on those credit cards per day. What we've experienced is individuals come in one day, and then come in another day, and come in the next day. So, we're hoping to come back in 2019 with another report surrounding that and a follow-up to that. What Virtual City Hall does is that it passes that credit card transaction charge on to the individual that wants to use that credit card, rather than the rest of the taxpayers absorbing it. So, there will be a 1.75% administration or a service fee associated with it to cover the cost of that credit card use. Because points cards, so if you pay with a point card, I, in my prior years, I always thought, wonderful, look, I get all these points, do they just magically appear? It's the vendor that pays for those. So, us as the town, we absorb those costs, and through the fees, pay for those. So, this will allow it to be passed on to the individuals that want to use credit cards and collect those points. For the first tax installment in 2019, that fee has been waived, so we can get people up and running and signed on. So, exciting. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, so I think if we move to getting rid of those credit card fees, I think we have an extra $60,000 in our, in our budget, say.
8.4 Environmental Services, 2019-03, results or request for tender for clean water and wastewater funding. Let said report be received, and that the contract for clean water and wastewater funding be awarded to BGL Contractors, as outlined in this report, in the amount of $2,364,400 plus applicable taxes.
Motion? Counselor Bowman, secondor? Counselor Verbeek, any questions on this one? All in favor? It's Kerry.
8.5 Community Services, 2019-002, transfer of beachside eats and treats ownership at the Colchester Harbor, and this is together with Bylaw 1780. Let said report be received, that Bylaw 1497 be repealed, that in agreement with Michelle Van Horn and Carson Broadbent be, sorry, to operate a concession stand at the Colchester Harbor for a one-year term, starting April 1st of this year, be approved, subject to the terms and conditions outlined in Bylaw 1780, and that Bylaw 1780 receive two ratings this evening.
Motion, Counselor Bondi and Counselor Van Nold. Any questions on this one? Are these the same people, may I ask? Are these same people from last year, Doug?
Through your worship, no, they sold the business to these new people, and that's why the purpose is report, to make sure the proper names are on the lease.
Okay. So, they, they are new people. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Counselor Van Nold.
Through the Chair, do we, do we know what this business was worth as a sale item?
Through your worship, do you know it?
Because, shouldn't we know that if it's, they're using our, our site, our property, and our equipment? I'm just, like, I know it hasn't been hugely successful, but I just wondered what, what do they, somebody's making money on selling this, or maybe they didn't, maybe they lost money. I'd just like to know.
Through your worship, we're not sure of that cost. Most equipment there is from the ownership, not the town, other than the dedicated space that's in the map, is basically the floor plan that they get. There's very little that is town that is in there.
Well, the, the deep fryers and stainless steel and all that stuff, that's got to be worth 50,000 or 80,000.
There is some cost, but majority is what they own, but in terms of what the business they sold it for is worth, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Counselor. If I can just say, we've had several people in there already. I, I think this is the third or fourth, because Bill was in there first. I mean, we had three or four people in there. So, it's a tough little business down there. It's seasonal, too, it's only a few months, eh? So, any other questions? No? Okay. All in favor? Kerry.
8.6 Community Services, 2019-005, re-annual reserve fund allocation for fire recruitment and training. Let said report be received, and that council approve, the Finance Department annually at year-end, transferring any savings from the weekly duties, meetings, fire calls, and medical calls accounts to a fire training reserve account.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, perhaps to our Director of Community Services, Doug Sweet, or even our Fire Chief, Rick Arnold. In the report, it says that we hire six people every four to five years, but it also says in the report that this year we're hiring six people. So, are we just hitting a bumper year in terms of people retiring, and people moving on, or are we going to see some numbers like this? Like, I just want to know, like, what's coming at us? What's the trend? Because it has, definitely has budget implications for us.
Chief, if you could answer that, please?
Through your worship, Counselor Bondi, this year's a bumper, we've had a few, we're looking at hiring nine people this year, but in the average, we've done averages over the past 10 years, and we're somewhere between four and six people every four to five years. So, this money, when, when, when I came to council back in '17, was to be able to provide training, pay the officers or people that are helping train, buy their new gear, and once we get them all trained up, they're ready to go and have all the necessary equipment to be a, to provide fire service.
Counselor Van Nold.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I just don't understand why we're paying for the, the training of firefighters. I mean, nobody paid for my training as a reporter. We don't pay for training of engineers before they become engineers. Why do we train, why do we pay for their training? I don't, and then, because then, when they're hired, they're paid for that expertise. Isn't it usual that people pay for their own schooling?
Chief?
Through you, your worship, the fire service is always, you hire people and you train them. We, if we were to ask, and in my prior report, it tells you NFPA 1001, Level 1 and 2, if they were to go get training, it would cost an individual about $15,000 to train, we're not going to have any volunteer firefighters. And so, we're providing that training, we're ensuring they get that training, and, and that's the caveat to bringing them into the volunteer service, because the, I mean, they're not getting paid the wage of a career firefighter to get their money back in any specific amount of time.
Well, I'd just like to point out that it costs most people a hell of a lot more than $15,000 to learn their trade, and I still don't understand why we're paying for schooling of one particular trade when everybody else has to pay for their own. Just, if...
Question to the chief. The other volunteer firefighters in different municipalities, they do onsite training?
Through your worship, yes. Every department, every volunteer department in the province of Ontario pay to train the volunteers to become firefighters. I mean, that, it's, it is our job to ensure that they're trained and know what to do in their job. As employers, we have to do that, and every volunteer service in the province of Ontario pay to train their individuals as firefighters. New legislation that came out has, has put a certification, we don't do certification, but now there's a training standard since 2014 that we need to meet, and the only way to meet that is to train the individuals and make sure we do meet that. And, and subsequent to that, our average lifespan of a firefighter is probably 20 to 25 years. So, you know, we're getting, the investment upfront now that we're making, we're getting back.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? All in favor? Kerry. Thank you, Chief.
8.7 January 2019 Building Report, for receipt.
Motion to receive it? Counselor Bondi and Counselor Van Nold. Any questions on the building report? All in favor? Kerry. Oh, pardon me, Chris would like to make one.
Through your worship, I just want to bring everyone's attention, what's up on the screen right now? We looked at kind of livening up those building reports and pulling out some key info for residents and for, for council to see.
pulling out some key info for residents and for, for council to see. You know, your feedback would be appreciated. This is something we're trying to pull out those key numbers, right? How much we spent, the permits, those things that, that people like to look at. So if you see anything that you like or don't like, or you'd like to see some different information, there's, there's plenty on that spreadsheet. I just thought this would be a better way to prove it.
The council's seen that in their report? Yeah, it's good. It's laid out good. Councillor Van Endel.
Through the chair, thanks very much. It does look good. It's great. It was good news. We're glad to see it. I just wonder if, do you attribute the strong month to anything in particular that stands out to you?
Through your worship, no, I haven't got into the numbers, but I just like seeing the good numbers, so I'll take it.
Agreed. Yeah. So, all in favor of that report? Let's carry.
Eight point eight, Legal and Legislative Services, 2019-004. Repregnancy and parental leave for members of council, for receipt, and that the policy be approved and adopted as of March 1st, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an accolade, an improvement, and an explanation along with this report. First of all, I want to say Essex Council is very baby-friendly. As everybody knows, I've had two children during the last term of council, and I'm a nursing mother, so I brought my babies along for the first six, six months of the term. Even though, you know, councillor Bowman knows, I've always brought my kids, right? So, so I want to say thank you to the support of council and administration while I've had to be a mom and be on council at the same time. If you're a woman and even a young man between the ages of nineteen and, you know, forty-five, fifty nowadays, chances are, and you're elected, you're going to have children when you're serving on council. So having a supportive council is, is really good. So thank you for that. One improvement I think we need to work on is having the meetings where we have the option of calling in, right? You know, councillor Bjorkman's on vacation, maybe he could have called in tonight. Deputy Mayor Maloche is sick, maybe he was well enough to call in. So I think that's something in our future we need to look at. You know, maybe one of my children gets sick in the future, but I can call in for a meeting. So that's something I think would be bringing accessibility to all of our council meetings for all of our council members. Some of us may get sick from time to time, or just not feeling good, contagious, contagious, but you can still operate, you know, you don't want to get everyone else sick, but you can call in. And one explanation, I can just, one explanation, I do have my phone with me from time to time. And tonight, actually, during the meeting, I got texts saying, "Where is the baby medicine?" But it actually doesn't say nicely from my significant other, because I was at council and he's home taking care of the children, and he couldn't find the baby Tylenol. So, so being a parent, you have to, you know, there's, there's those things that come, and Essex Council's always really accommodated me on that. But I would like to see on our radar that conference calling into meetings at some point in the future. It's not, it's not a priority. I'm hopefully done having children. I'm hopefully done. But for people to make it accessible in the future.
Through you, Mr. Chair. As, as council was advised by our CEO, probably about a year ago now, maybe a year and a half ago, there was a report brought on the various Bill 68 changes, one of which the new legislation allows for the possibility of electronic participation in meetings. And, and so councillor Bondi's comments are very timely, because I, I, we, we will come to council soon, looking for direction from council on that, as to whether they want electronic participation to be part of a revised procedural bylaw. Eight point nine, Legal and Legislative Services, 2019-005. Recode of Conduct Policy Amendments, for receipt, and that the Code of Conduct for members of council and local boards and committees policy be adopted as of March 1st, 2019.
Over. That was councillor Verbeek and councillor Van Endel. Any questions? Carry, or, all in favor? Carry. Thank you.
Eight point ten, Legal and Legislative Services. Read Bill 68, March 1st Amendments to procedural bylaw. And this is together with amending Bylaw 1788, for receipt this evening, and that Bylaw 1788 be in a bylaw to amend the procedural bylaw, be ready first, second, third time, and finally pass this evening.
Have a mover? Councillor Bowman, seconder. Councillor Bondi. Any questions on this one? No? All in favor? Let's carry.
Item nine on the agenda. Any reports from our, our youth member Hoffman?
Um, no report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to see you're back. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, any updates from county council this evening? Eleven point one point one, Correspondence for receipt from the Town of Lake Shore. Eleven point two point one, Correspondence from Brad Fournette, offering to sit as a member of the Accessibility Committee, that Mr. Fournette be appointed to the Accessibility Committee, or, that is, his request be received and supported, and that Mr. Fournette accordingly be appointed to the Accessibility Committee.
Councillor Verbeek, seconder. Councillor Garen. Any questions on this one? No? All in favor? Let's carry.
Eleven point two point two, that Eva Hoffman be appointed as Town of Essex Youth Council Member representing wards one and two for the term of 2019 to 2020.
Over. Councillor Bondi, seconder. Councillor Verbeek. All in favor? Carry. And it's nice to see you're back.
Twelve point one, that the Striking Committee Minutes of February 4th, 2019 be received and adopted, and that council concurs with the recommendation of the Striking Committee, and that accordingly Dan Boudreaux, Felix Wade Benzo, Luke Martin, Ray Benato, and Kurt Carter be appointed to sit as members of the Drainage Committee to November 14th, 2022.
Have a mover on this one? Councillor Garen, seconder. Councillor Van Endel. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Let's carry.
Twelve point two, that the Minutes of the Essex Centre BIA meeting dated December 18th, 2018 be rece, be receipt, sorry, be received, approved, and adopted is circulated.
Have a mover, please? Councillor Bowman, councillor Verbeek. All in favor? Let's carry.
Thirteen point one, that the bank payments report, the pre-authorized payments and the payroll for December 2018 be ratified as submitted.
Councillor Bowman, mo, uh, seconder. Councillor Bondi. Any questions? All in favor? Carry.
Thirteen point two, that the bank payments report, pre-authorized payments, and the payroll for January 2019 be ratified as submitted.
Mover, please? Councillor Bowman, councillor Van Endel. Any questions? All in favor? Let's carry.
Item fifteen on the agenda, and as adopted as part of the published agenda this evening, we have a notice of motion for presentment only from councillor Verbeek, and once presented, it will be brought back to the March 4th meeting for consideration by council.
Councillor Verbeek, can you state your motion, please?
Just that administration revise the procedural bylaw that, to allow youth members...
Kim, councillor, turn your mic on.
Through you, your worship, that administration revise the procedural bylaw to allow youth members to represent youth at council meetings regardless of the ward that they reside in?
No discussion on the motion. Um, there's no discussion on the motion. So, we need a mover, though. No? No? You don't need a...
Mr. Mayor, it's just, it's just for presentment purposes. It'll, it'll be actioned potentially by council at the March 4th meeting. Sorry.
I don't intend to, a point of order, I have a notice of motion of my own. Do I make it now?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to move that the, the climate change position that we approved in the operating budget last week, that, that the, the job posting includes the words "two year contract."
Thank you.
Seventeen point one, Bylaws that require third and final reading. Seventeen eighty-five, the confirming bylaw from the February 4th meeting. Through you, Mr. Chair, my apologies, I skipped over item sixteen. Any reports and announcements from the council members?
Uh, start with councillor Garen. Councillor Verbeek?
I, through you, your worship, I'd just like to second your welcome to Ms. Hoffman. We're really glad to have you here.
Okay, councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let our members of public know that Monday, February 25th, from 5:30 to 8:30, we're having our next budget meeting at the McGregor Community Centre, and hope to see some members of the public there. And then, there's the notice of special zoning meeting in Harrow. I think we did some ads in the Harrow paper, but just in case, and I'm sure we'll put it on Facebook and stuff. But Tuesday, February 26th, from 6 to 8 at the Harrow Arena, and that's a zoning meeting for the junior school properties.
Councillor Van Endel.
Yes, I'd just like to say that today on Twitter, I accepted a challenge from my former coworker and fellow councillor in Amersburg, who challenged, who bet me a lunch that Amersburg's hockey team would beat the Essex 73s. And he knows I'm not much of a, not much of a hockey fan, but I decided I'd take on the bet, so I hope they win the series.
Thank you. Councillor Bowman.
Uh, just want to let everyone know that the annual train show is at the Essex Public School this weekend, so if you've got some free time and you want something for your kids to look at, it's a great, great few hours you can spend and think back to your youth.
Thank you. Thank you. I only have one thing, and that sides with councillor Van Endel. Support your local hockey club, and let's go out to some of them playoff games. Support them. Thank you.
Seventeen point two point one, Bylaw 1786, to appoint a Chief Administrative Officer for the Town of Essex effective March 15th, 2019.
Have a motion, councillor Verbeek, seconder. Councillor Bondi. Do you accept? All in favor? It's nice to have you aboard, Chris.
And 1789, for two readings to confirm the proceedings of this February 19th regular council meeting.
Mover? Councillor Bowman and councillor Garen, all in favor? Carry. Need a motion to adjourn. Thank you. I can just say, this is a sick council tonight. We have a lot of sick people here tonight.